Okay. We are, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our, our council meeting, which should be brief before tonight's festivities. A couple, a couple of announcements for, for both the council as well as the audience. The first is, the microphones to the council and to staff are live at all times, so they are, they are on. They don't, they're not being turned off. And in addition to that, because we're doing the meeting here, when we do voting later tonight, when I ask for the call for the motion, if you are a yes, you will raise your hand. And that's how the clerk will record your vote, by raising your right hand. That will record your vote. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting of the city council to order. And as we do all of our meetings, we will start with a moment of silence, so if we can please have the council members stand for a moment of silence, and then we're gonna be led by Councilmember Patrick O'Donnell.
Mayor, we need that.
In the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, we need that.
And we're gonna call the meeting, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call first. Put your right hand over your heart.
Roll call first, Patrick.
We're doing a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Wait.
Councilmember Lena Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Suja Loenthal.
Here.
Councilmember Suja Price.
Here.
Councilmember Patrick O'Donnell.
Here.
Councilmember Stacy Mungo.
Here.
Councilmember Dee Andrews.
Here.
Councilmember Roberto Yaranga.
Here.
Councilmember Al Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Rex Richardson.
Here.
Mayor Robert Garcia.
Here.
Yeah!
Now we are ready to salute our great country's flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, has anyone from public comment pulled a speaker's card for the beginning part of the meeting? Okay, see, okay, seeing none. So we're gonna move on to the one item of business today, which is the election of the vice mayor. And I'm gonna begin just by giving the kind of ground rules about how the election will work per, per our rules. When we begin the item, what will begin, what will happen is I'll ask for nominations. Nominations, any one of the council members can make a nomination from the floor. It does not need a second. You can just make the nomination. Once all the nominations are then made, we'll close the nominations. Once nominations are closed, I will ask for any public comment, if there is public comment on, on the election of vice mayor. And then once public comment is done, I will take it back and then begin by asking anyone that made the nomination for that other member, they will begin by making a statement clearly in support of that, of that member. And then we'll take the votes as the people are nominated. So then unless there's any questions, we'll go ahead and, and begin. Mr. O'Donnell. I'll nominate Al Austin for vice mayor. Any other nominations? Mr. Andrews.
I'll nominate Suja Loenthal.
Okay. We have Al Austin and Suja Loenthal. Any other nominations? Can I get a motion to close nominations?
Move to close.
Okay. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor of the close nominations, say aye.
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 Okay, nominations closed. With that, I'll take any public comment on the election. Okay, seeing none, we will then now go into the election. So what I will do is, the, the first is the nomination of Al Austin. If you, what, Mr. Herrera will record the votes. Once I ask, those that are in favor of the nomination for Mr. Austin, I will ask you to, to raise your hand. Please keep your hand up so Mr. Herrera can take the, the roll call. And then we'll move on to the second nomination, unless the first nomination gets five votes. So all those in favor of the nomination of Al Austin, please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, was it the roll call?
I believe I saw Mr. Austin standing. Yes, he's the fourth.
What was the?
It's kinda hard to see, but, yeah. Do it one more time.
One more time?
Yeah, it was a little difficult to see the two hands down here.
I don't know.
If you, if you'd like to vote for Councilmember Austin, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Your right hand, get it up.
Right hand.
Four votes.
Okay, that's four. Okay, if the motion fails, we will move on to the next nomination. The next nomination is the nomination for Suja Loenthal. All those in favor of Suja Loenthal, please raise your hand.
Five votes.
Five votes. Okay. Congratulations, Suja Loenthal, she's been elected vice mayor. Okay, so that was the, the one item that we had on the agenda today. At this time, I'm gonna open it up to any of the council members, if they'd like to make any comments, and then I'm gonna open it up for a final public comment. Any comments from any members of the city council? Vice Mayor Loenthal.
I know we'll have an opportunity to welcome our new council members. I'd like to take this opportunity to actually thank the council members that are staying from our current service, and I especially like to thank Mr. Al Austin, Councilmember Al Austin. He is a dedicated public servant, and I look forward to serving with him and the others that are really part of the old council. This is an exciting time, and I'm really looking forward to the new council members that have joined us and becoming a new team together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rex Richardson.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just invite folks after this meeting, if you'd like to join us, just one level down in the seaside ballroom area, we're gonna have a small meet and greet prior to the proceedings. This will be to celebrate the Ninth District inaugural ceremonies, so you're more than welcome to join us.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaranga.
I just wanna express my congratulations to Councilmember Suja Loenthal, now Vice Mayor Loenthal. Looking forward to working with you and, and the mayor as we move the city forward. Thank you very much.
And Councilmember Pat O'Donnell.
Congratulations, Robert. I think you're gonna do a wonderful job, bring a lot of energy to Long Beach, and that's why I think you were elected. I do welcome the new council members, but also their families, many of whom I'm sure are sitting out there tonight. And I can assure you, not all nights are as exciting as tonight, but this is an exciting experience, and I look forward to seeing you at the events and working with, with your husbands and wives and mates up here.
Great, thank you. At, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I also'd like to congratulate Mrs. Loenthal and the new council members on this crisis. I think you're gonna see that it's gonna be a little different than what it's been because of the fact that we've got so many females, but this is, this is what's gonna make it so wonderful. You guys are gonna be here to support our mayor, and I think he's gonna do a great job. And I really wanna really congratulate you also, Mr. Garcia, and we're here to support you in any way necessary. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna welcome the new council members to the council. I wanna congratulate Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Loenthal on her recent election. And just say how much I'm looking forward to working with this, this very good-looking group of council members. This is what Long Beach looks like. This is what diversity looks like, and I think everybody in the city will, will have a point of view and have a voice here at the table over the next four years, and looking forward to working with this great group of individuals. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, with that, then, we're gonna be moving on. This is the final public comment period. If there's any item on the agenda that was not on the agenda that someone wanted to comment on, now would be the time. Seeing none, we will then go ahead and go into a recess, so we will recess to begin the swearing-in ceremonies at 5:30. Thank you all, and see you at 5:30.
Welcome to the reconvening of the Long Beach City Council meeting. This is an historic day for our community. My name is Doug Otto, and I am your master of ceremonies for this evening. Tonight, we will be swearing in five newly-elected city council members, three re-elected citywide office holders, and a new mayor. We will also enjoy some exceptional music, and for the first time in our history, our city council has four women members. Two Hispanic members. One Persian-American member. And one Indian-American member. The newly-elected mayor is just 36 years old. He is our first Hispanic mayor. Our first openly gay mayor. And the first bilingual mayor in Long Beach history. But before we get down to the business of swearing in this new leadership for the city of Long Beach, Mayor-elect Garcia has asked Long Beach resident, math teacher, and founding member of the Elm Street Band, Roland Misahan, to perform one of our mayor's favorite songs, which will be followed by the presentation of colors, the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, and the singing of our national anthem by Broadway performer Davis Gaines, and then an inspirational message by former Ninth District Councilmember Steve Neal. So, let's get this rolling. Roland, come on out.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Long Beach. I'd like to do a number made famous by Israel Kanaka Vai Ole. Somewhere over the rainbow, skies are blue, stay the dream that you dare to dream, it do come true. Someday I wish upon a star, wake up where the clouds are far behind me, where troubles melt like lemon drops, high above the chimney top, that's where you'll find me, see it. Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly, birds fly over the rainbow, why, tell me why, can't I?
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep it under your heart. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the Good evening. Please bow with me. Gracious God, Creator of the universe, we stand before you today to invoke your blessings on this gathering. We ask that you guide these servants that you have selected to govern and lead this great city. Father, we pray that you give them wisdom and discernment. We pray that the decisions that they make will not be guided by selfish gain, but will reflect the well-being of the populace that they represent. We put aside any petty agendas to move towards the common good for all the residents of the great city of Long Beach. We pray that through their leadership, this city and all of its inhabitants will prosper. We pray this in your match of this name.
Well, thank you to Roland Misahan for his rendition of "Over the Rainbow." Let's hear it for Roland. To the Long Beach Police Department color guard for their presentation of the colors. To Girl Scout Troops 683 and 773 for the Pledge of Allegiance. To Davis Gaines for his beautiful rendition of our national anthem. And to Steve Neal for his inspirational message. And now, ladies and gentlemen, to the business of the day. We will now seat our four continuing council members. First, from the Second District, newly-elected Vice Mayor Suja Loenthal. From the Fourth District, Councilmember Patrick O'Donnell. From the Sixth District, Councilman Dee Andrews. And from the Eighth District, Councilmember Al Austin. And now, ladies and gentlemen, the newly-elected city council members and citywide elected officials, including our mayor, will be sworn in. Each will be introduced individually and will be accompanied by the individual who will be administering the oath of office, and the person who will be holding the Bible for the actual swearing-in. After the swearing-in, each newly-elected individual will address you briefly. Continuing council members, you may be seated. First, newly-elected First Councilmember Lena A. Gonzalez, whose son... ...whose, whose son, Zorian Rodriguez, will administer the oath of office. Her mother, Isabel Gonzalez, will hold the Bible. Are you ready?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Please place your left hand on the Bible.
Okay. I, Lena Gonzalez.
I, Lena Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental, can you say that again? That was a little fast.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any, any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and will.
That I will and will.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I have to give my son a big round of applause because it took a lot for him to get up here, so, thank you. So, so much for being District One. District One means you're first in speeches, you're first in line, so they all get to see my mistakes, that's just great. First off, I wanna thank the transition team for putting this together. Their hard work and dedication was just tremendous in putting this all together for the whole city of Long Beach, it's just so great. So, thank you, transition team. I also wanna say thank you to our new mayor, Robert Garcia. I spent the last five years with him in the field in the First District, which I am now honored to represent. Thank you for your leadership and guidance, Mr. Mayor. We may not always agree, but I just wanna let you know that I deeply respect you, so thank you so much. To my beautiful family, my son Zorion, who's growing into a smart and credible young man, my awesome brother Steven, my parents, who taught me a strong work ethic, Vince and Isabel Gonzalez, my partner Adam, my many cousins and family members that are here, elected officials that have supported me, friends in labor and business, together, you all made this happen, so thank you so very much. And to my campaign staff and also the new council staff, I know that this year was tremendous, it was treacherous at times, but we remained positive, speaking directly about the solutions, hearing resident concerns, and making sure that we were always listening to our residents, which is important. I'm absolutely honored to be representing a district that I am so crazily, deeply in love with, from the Washington to the Willmore City, to the downtown Craftsman, East Village, and beyond, we're the first district, this is what we are. In all its uniqueness, diversity, its struggles, and great potential, all the same, I know that in continuing to work alongside our leaders, many of whom volunteer countless hours, beyond their nine-to-five, beyond their family lives, to make sure that we have higher standards for public safety, we have more community gardens, that we advocate for more park programs, I know that... that we advocate for more park programs, I know that with this, we will always flourish. It is my role now as a City Council member to make sure that we're continuing to entrust in your visions and ideas, offering and making available more opportunities for involvement in advocacy, and always making sure that we are going even further with that. And we can only do this with collaboration. I'm going to collaborate with many business interests in the private sector, labor, nonprofits, our schools, and of course, our wonderful city employees. I have to give our city employees a big round of applause. Our city employees are the ones that make us look good in the City Council, and I really have to say thank you so much. From Development Services, our management, our public safety, parks, Health Department, you all have made this city just even better than it is. And I ask one thing of myself and I ask one thing of our First District residents. Let's continue striving, but let's also not underestimate ourselves. We are one of the most eclectic, most complex, most wonderful districts. We have the northern part of the port, a thriving downtown, the birthplace of Long Beach, the Willmore City, a bustling business industrial area, the West Side, and we have a local music scene in the North Pine neighborhood, and a beautiful courthouse just in the First District, probably more beautiful than anywhere in the state. So with all this, I say thank you, and I look forward to serving you as your next City Council member. Thank you all for being here.
Next, Third District Councilmember Susie Price, who will have the oath of office administered by Orange County District Attorney Tony Rikakis, and her son Keon Price will hold a copy of the United States Constitution.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Susie Price.
I, Susie Price.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, residents of Long Beach, for being here tonight and for coming here to witness such a great historical event for our city. I want to take a moment to thank Tony Rikakis, the District Attorney, who just swore me in. I have a tremendous amount of respect for this man and what he has done to promote the rights of victims of crime in this state for his entire career. He has been a champion for their rights, and he has given me many opportunities to serve them. And I am grateful for his support and his being here tonight to join us for this event. I want to take a moment to thank all of the residents of the Third District, who gave me what I wanted more than anything else, which was a meaningful shot and an opportunity at service. The residents of the Third District made that possible, and I am so incredibly grateful to all of you. You will always, always get the best that I will have to give and know that I will strive to do the right thing when it comes to this great city and to the needs of your community. I want to give a special thanks to Rick and Joanne Davis, who helped me get to this point and who started this process as a simple business relationship and have turned out to be lifelong friends who will be with me as long as they will allow me to be in their lives, so thank you. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the staff of the Third District. Julie Malicki, Ricky Dockery, Antonella Schaub, and Christina Duggan. Together, the five of us are going to do great things for our community. And I ask you to partner with me as we go through this process and as we serve our constituents and the people in this city. I want to thank... There's a lot of young people in the audience here tonight. Many of them walked precincts for me and were very involved in our campaign. They are part of my village of support. And I want to share with you that during the campaign, I repeatedly said, "I am running for office because the future of Long Beach lives in my home," and that is true. My two boys are a reminder to me every day that if we make decisions as city leaders with their future in mind, then we will have a healthy city, a balanced city. And they deserve that, and we owe it to them. And so that will be on the forefront of my mind with every decision that I make. While we're on the subject of young people, I want to share with you the only lesson you need to know in life, and that is, choose your partner in life well. I want to take a moment to thank my husband, Mark, without whom I would not have the support to be able to have the privilege to serve all of you, so thank you. And a woman taught me a very long time ago that if you are a hard-working mom who serves your community, you can do amazing things. That woman is my mother, and she, along with my uncle, who helped raise me, are here tonight, and so I want to say thank you to them. We, we are Long Beach. We are diverse. We are lively. We are filled with potential. And we, as your city leaders, are united in our service to you. It is my privilege, I mean privilege, and honor to serve you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next, Fifth District Councilmember Stacy Rose Mungo will have the oath of office administered by Long Beach Police Chief Jim McDonald. And the Bible will be held by her mother, Deborah Shea.
I, Stacy Mungo... Excuse me. I hate when that happens. I, Stacy Mungo.
I, Stacy Mungo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. What an exciting day, what an amazing crowd. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the transition team that put on such a successful event, that all of Long Beach, from all corners of the district, could come together in this event, that people from nonprofits and business and neighborhoods could all come together in one place to support our future that we, together, will make. I want to start with a few very special thank yous. I want to thank my mom, who not so enthusiastically nudged me and said, "Go ahead." She's been a rock, she's been there through it all, through the ups and downs, and she's one of the most protective and loyal moms in the world, and I appreciate you greatly. To my brother, who is a rock, a calming figure in our family, one of reason. With that reason, I will come to you on each and every one of my votes on the City Council and ensure that our future is based on balance and reason and understanding and ethics. To my boyfriend, who went to hundreds of campaign events in many different venues and genres, who remembers every person's name and genuinely has grown to care about each and every one of you, thank you. And to the friends and family and neighbors who walked 20,000 doors with us on the east side of Long Beach, I owe you each a pair of shoes. Most importantly, along the way, you have a community that raises a family. And I'm so thankful to the mentors who have been in my life. From when I began college and when I started working for the YMCA of Greater Long Beach back in the 90s and all the way up through graduate school, each and every person that continued to reinforce my commitment to serving my community in new and interesting ways, thank you for being there on the great days and the more challenging days, because together, we made it. I am honored to enthusiastically serve the residents, neighborhoods, businesses, and visitors of Long Beach. Together, we will reach new heights. Thank you for all your love and support. I'm going to need you to make sure that we move forward together, so thank you in advance for your consideration and thank you for trusting me.
Next, Seventh District Councilmember Roberto Uranga will have the oath of office administered by former United States Secretary of Labor and Los Angeles County Supervisor-elect Hilda Solis. Roberto's wife... Roberto's wife, the formal council member of the Seventh District, Tonya Reyes-Uranga, will hold the family Bible.
Before I begin, I would just like to take a personal privilege and tell you how honored and pleased I am to be here in the great city of Long Beach alongside the new incoming City Councilmember Roberto Uranga, who I have personally known for more than 20 years, starting out in his role as an educator at Cal State Long Beach, continuing as a trustee, and also continuing with his efforts to create jobs, job training, and prosperity for all. I salute you and congratulate you. Now, I'd like to... Like to begin by administering the oath. I, state your name.
I, Roberto Uranga.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith.
That I bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, thank you so much. You know, one thing about speeches, and when you're coming in the middle of a speech, is that everything you've written has already been said. But my speeches have always been from the heart, and I speak from the heart as I speak now. My road to this position, to where I am now, was a long one. Sometimes it was arduous and sometimes met with trials and tribulations. But in all that journey, there was always one element that kept it together and that kept me focused, and that's family. Today, I'm honored to have my brother and my sister, Marielena Uranga and Lazer Uranga, here today and joining me for this celebration. Of course, thank you. My brother was my big brother when I was growing up. He saw me heading left, and he said, "You got to go right." And he gave me a little slap upside the head and said, "Okay, yeah, bro, guess we're going to go that way." But I also want to thank Secretary of Labor, Hilda Solis, who has been such a wonderful representative for our country. Thank you, Hilda, for your service. I had the honor of introducing her during a national convention of community college trustees when I was National Chairman, and she gave a wonderful speech about the working families and the needs to keep our country strong and to keep working families together with good wages and good working conditions. And I totally support that value. We also have in our audience today the Secretary Treasurer of the LA County Federation of Labor, Marielena Durazo. Marielena, could you say hi? And all my friends and family from labor. My brother was a Teamster, and I have a lot of friends who supported me because we need to keep families working and we need them good wages, and we're going to work hard towards that. But today, it wouldn't happen without my own personal family. And before I begin, I want to give a big shout-out to my son, Emiliano Uranga, who is in Washington, DC with the Young Democrats of America, getting some training out there and hopefully following my footsteps. I love you, mijo. And of course, my son, Roberto Tomas, my daughter, Rosalinda, who both have been through those arduous campaigns where at one time they were sitting on the corner of Long Beach Boulevard and Wardlow and got sprayed by water for holding a sign, "Elect Tonya Uranga." But that's campaigns, and we lived through them and we learned from them, and we know that the progress that we make is a progress that we have with our children. And of course, who else can I thank the most than my bride of 28 years, Tonya Reyes-Uranga? Without her support, her love, and her ability to keep the family together, I don't know where I'd be right now, certainly not here. But more importantly, and above all else, I want to thank the residents of the Seventh District for having that trust and faith in electing me to serve as their council member for the Seventh for the 7th District and doing it in April. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Next, and our last councilmember to be sworn in is 9th District Councilmember Rex Allen Richardson Jr., who will have the oath of office. Who will have the oath of office administered by former 9th District Councilmember Steve Neal. The bible will be held by Councilmember-elect Richardson's wife, Nina Richardson.
Please repeat after me. I, Rex Richardson, do solemnly swear.
I, Rex Richardson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
Thou well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon I am about to enter.
Councilmember Rex Richardson.
Thank you. Am I on? I think it's on. Thank you, Councilmember Neal. You've served the 9th District with dignity and integrity, and I look forward to calling on you in the years to come for your support and your wisdom and your guidance. I want to, there you go, Steve. I want to begin by acknowledging my wife, the beautiful, drop-dead gorgeous, the soon-to-be Dr. Nina Richardson. Listen, listen, we've had, we've had a great year this year, folks. We just celebrated our first year anniversary. We expecting our first child later on this year, and thank you. Actually, just this morning, we learned that we're having a baby girl, so, so we'll have a first child coming soon, a first girl of the 9th District coming soon, so I'm really excited about that. Next, I want to acknowledge my family who's joined us today. Thank you so much for your love and support over the years and specifically with this campaign. You know, my mother was my first max-out contributor, thanks, Mom. My sister was my campaign manager, she worked really hard on the campaign. I've got cousins and in-laws and family who knocked on doors and worked for hours and hours, so as you can see, this has been a family affair, so thank you so much, family. So, you know, our family, we've seen the ups and the downs that life has to offer, you know? From being born, you know, on an Air Force Base in Belleville, Illinois, to being raised in the backwoods of Pickens County, Alabama, to, that's right, Alabama, so to finally owning a home and setting roots here in the great city of Long Beach. So, and personally, I've, you know, I was a kid who barely graduated high school. Statistically, I shouldn't be here. And, you know, I went on to become the student body president in college and now the youngest councilmember our city's had in recent history. So, but my story is not unlike many Long Beach families. It's very, it could be very different or it could be very similar. That's what's beautiful about our city, it's diversity, and God places us in the spotlight so that we can be different, and hopefully that difference will allow us to make an impact on others. So, so next, I want to acknowledge, so I want to acknowledge the, my fellow citizens, my residents of the 9th District, make some noise. There you go. I know you're here. So, we've come a long way, folks, but this election is about the future. So, we, you know, we, we've got the social responsibility to create a new, forge a new future for our city, and we've got to do the good work of uplifting the youth who march onward and upward toward the light, that's our job. We've got, we've got to continue the Uptown Renaissance movement, ensuring that uptown is a preview to the downtown, you know? And, you know, and truly with faith and the willingness to work together, we can, we can ensure that North Long Beach and the rest of the city is as best as it can be and truly become that proverbial rising tide that lifts all ships. Next, and to close, I'd like to acknowledge the Empower Uptown Transition Team, who's done great work to bring an exciting new form of government and democracy to North Long Beach, so I'd like to acknowledge you and stay tuned for that. So, and then lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the new 9th District staff is a staff of fresh, innovative, energetic, strategic folks that are gonna help me to lead the team in the 9th District, so I want to acknowledge my Chief of Staff, Shawna Stevens, wherever you are. Health Department, make some noise. And Marina Escobedo, and John Comfort, and Tedrick Williams. So, we're really looking forward to working with them, so thank you so much for your time, and let's get to work, folks.
The first of our recently re-elected citywide leadership is City Auditor Laura Dowd. The bible for Laura will be held by Assistant City Auditor Debbie Ellis, and she will be sworn in by me. It's an honor.
Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I, Laura Dowd.
I, Laura Dowd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge these duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge these duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to thank Doug Otto for his service to Long Beach for so many years. I also want to thank my Assistant City Auditor, Deborah Ellis, for her great and outstanding work that she does for the city of Long Beach. My heart is really full of gratitude this evening. I'm very humbled and grateful to be here with each one of you tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your confidence and your trust in me to serve another term as your City Auditor. I'm, I feel like this position was tailor-made for me. With my background and my love for Long Beach, it's a real privilege to serve, and my heart is full of gratitude. I'm grateful for the opportunity to take this oath, to support and defend our constitution. I'm so thankful for this country we have and the servicemen and women who fight and defend our freedoms daily. I'm grateful for the freedom we have to vote and to elect our leaders and to have a ceremony and a celebration like this tonight in a safe and a civil manner without violence. We really, truly have the greatest country, and I'm so grateful for that. I also want to thank my family. I feel so blessed to have such a wonderful husband and a sweet daughter. And I'm thankful for my mom and my dad and my mother-in-law and father-in-law, who are here this evening as well. I also have many members of my staff. I'm so indebted to them, and I feel so grateful to have such talent in our office, that I have the privilege to work with people who come to work every day enthused about their jobs and trying to find new ways and new ideas and new approaches and how we can better serve the city of Long Beach. And this is truly a great privilege for me, and I'm so thankful for their dedication and service to the city. Thank you. And as I look out this evening to this group of people, I'm so humbled, and I have learned and grown so much over the past eight years of my service as City Auditor. One of the great benefits of serving in a position like this is I have the opportunity to be out into the community and have met so many of you, have observed the way you have devoted your time and your talents and your resources and volunteering so many of your hours to making this city a better city, and I am truly grateful for that, and I know the strength of this city is in its people. I'm reminded of an allegory of the redwood trees. Just briefly, our beautiful majestic California redwoods can grow up to 300 feet tall. They can grow and weigh more than a million pounds, but their root system only grows down about three to six feet. It's because, you wonder, what holds these trees up, these huge majestic trees? What holds them up? Well, their, their root systems extend out instead of going down. They grow close together and their root systems link together, and so what holds them up? They hold each other up. The strength of the redwood trees is in linking themselves together. And truly, that is the strength of the city of Long Beach, how we have all linked together to support and strengthen each other as we strengthen this wonderful city, the best city with the best people, the best weather, the best neighborhoods. I want you to know, I'm eager to serve the next four years with all of my heart to make this the best city possible. I love it so much. Thank you very much.
Our next citywide elected official to be sworn in is City Prosecutor Doug Halbert. Doug will, Doug will be sworn in by former Governor George Duke-Majin, and the bible will be held by Doug's daughter, Avery.
Before we begin, I'd just like to add my congratulations to our new mayor and to all of the new members of the city council. And this is a very memorable event for me. The first time I got elected here in Long Beach was 1963, I think it was. People ask me how I am. I'm fine, only I'm just getting old, that's all. Older. Long Beach has really been great to me, Doug, and I'm sure you feel the same way about your life and your career. I met my wife, who was a resident of Long Beach, and we've been married 57 years. Where is my, where is my wife? I hope that's right. We have three children, they all grew up here, went to school here. They're all married now, we have six grandchildren. But this is not about me. This is what happens when you call on an older guy to do this. All right. All right, Doug, you will raise your right hand and you will repeat after me. I, Doug Halbert, do solemnly swear.
I, Doug Halbert, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Doug.
It is a privilege and an honor to have served the last four years as your City Prosecutor, and it is a privilege and an honor to serve in that capacity for the next four years. I want to thank many people, too many people, but I want to start by recognizing and thanking Governor George Duke-Majin, who has given to this community so much, and most recently has given his name to the newest and the best courthouse in the state of California here in Long Beach. To my friends, to my family, to my staff, I want to thank you for all that you've done for me. I want to thank you for your inspiration to me, which continues every day. To the newly-elected officials here tonight, congratulations. Each of you has earned this recognition, and get ready because the work starts tomorrow. To the returning officeholders, the work starts for you as well. The obligation is for you to mentor and to help those who are newer in office, and remember to work. for you to mentor and to help those who are newer in office and remember to work as one team together for the betterment of the city of Long Beach. To all of us, I ask that may not a day go by that we do not thank God for our blessings, many of which we undoubtedly too often take for granted. May we each find internal peace and fulfillment because no man can bring peace to the world until he has brought peace first to himself. May each of us reflect on the gifts and talents we have, not so that we may inventory them, but so that we can consider ways of sharing them with others. And finally, may we, each of us, use the next four years and the rest of our time on this earth wisely so that we may always strive to leave this place better than we found it. Thank you.
Next and our last elected official citywide, except for the mayor of Long Beach, is Charles Parkin. Charles? Charlie will have the oath administered by Assistant City Attorney Michael Mays and the Bible will be held by Charles's wife, Therese Parkin.
Are you ready, Charlie?
I'm ready.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Charles Parkin, do solemnly swear.
I, Charles Parkin, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Good evening, Long Beach. Thank you for your patience. I am the last speaker. I'll be 30, 40 minutes. No. I'll prove that attorneys can be brief. I would like to thank, first of all, my wife Therese and my family for their support. I have learned during the campaign that it's certainly not just a person or the person here in front of you, but it's the family that supports us and keeps us going. And in that regard, I'd like to thank my father, John, who's here, and my uncle Bob, who taught me about public service and hard work. And they had long distinguished careers with the city of Long Beach and are truly great examples to me. And thank you. I would also like to thank my children who are here, Greg, who was instrumental on my campaign, my son and my son Andrew, and my daughter Lauren and her husband Ryan, who are here, and my granddaughter Sophie. I haven't heard her yet, so that's good. So that's, it's truly, truly a blessing to be here. I look back and I thank Mike for swearing me in. I've known Mike for probably 40 years. We're both finishing our 30th year working here for the city. We're excited about continuing. I want to echo the comments of all the council members in the citywide. I had a tree story too, but mine resulted in litigation, so I won't tell Laura's city. But I look forward to doing great things with the new council. We are there to support them, our office, my second family. I want to thank the office. They're fantastic. We do great work. And I appreciate all the hard work that they do and it's behind the scenes and that's okay. But we have to be there for this new council and we're ready and we're willing to take that challenge on. So thank you very, very much.
And now, just about right now, very soon, we are going to swear in our new mayor. Robert Garcia will be sworn in by California Attorney General Kamala D. Harris. And Ms. Harris, will you please join us on stage?
Well, it is my great honor and joy to have the privilege to swear in the next, the new, the who will prove to be great mayor of Long Beach, Robert Garcia. You know, representing our great state, I am constantly reminded that that old adage about who we are remains true. And when I look at the folks who are here behind me and at the person who will come on the stage shortly, we all know that it is true. So goes California, goes the rest of the country. So goes Long Beach, goes California. And as we all know, part of California's greatness is that we are always striving to be the best that we can be. And we are never burdened by what has been, by simply what has been. We are always motivated by who we can be and what we aspire to be. And that is certainly true when we think of the election of Robert Garcia. He is an individual who is about to take an oath and take it very seriously to work in the public trust. But to do that work in a way, he has constantly done his work, serving on the council, serving as vice mayor, to embrace innovation, to think about the priorities that Long Beach and by extension, the rest of the state faces when it comes to issues of public safety. He has been right there, supporting the needs of law enforcement, but also talking about what we can do to be smart on crime and shut the revolving door in terms of recidivism. He has been smart in terms of appreciating all that we must do to preserve our environment with an emphasis in particular on the role that mayors can have in such an important way in terms of preservation of our parks. He has been smart in understanding that if we are going to thrive, we have to have a business community that is supported. And he has done that in a way that has also appreciated that when that community thrives, the rest of the community will prosper. He is someone who has made history as the first Latino, the first openly gay, and the youngest. But the thing I also know about Robert Garcia is that when he takes this oath and takes office, he will be dedicated, as he has proven himself always to be, to make sure that yes, he is the first, but he won't be the last. Come on out here, Robert. I.
I, Robert Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I am upon to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you too. Thank you. Thank you. I love you all too. I love you all too. I want to begin first by thanking the great Attorney General of the state of California, Kamala Harris. Give her a big, big round of applause. We look forward to working with her in the future. She is a great leader for our state and our country. I also want to begin tonight by congratulating all the incredibly talented and committed men and women that are right behind me. The new members of the city council, our city auditor, our city prosecutor, and our city attorney. Congratulations, everybody. I would also like to thank the chair of my transition team, who quite frankly has been a great friend, someone that him and I have had great discussions about the future of our city and has done a fantastic job of transitioning as we get elected tonight and sworn in tonight as mayor. A big round of applause for Doug Otto and the entire transition team. I also want to thank, of course, the inaugural committee, my transition team, and the entire inaugural committee that helped put not just this event together, but including our tree planting we did, our day of service where we planted 120 trees in North Long Beach, as well as all the other events. Thank you very much for your hard work. And let's give, and let's give a huge round of applause to the men and women that are working here tonight in the terrace theater, at the convention center, that are helping out, that are cleaning the restrooms, that are making sure that we're all well taken care of. To my beautiful mother who is up here and to my entire family, thank you. I love you. This is your American dream. This is your hard work for us to be able to be here at this very special moment. And to my partner, Matt, of six years. I always say Matt is the smartest person I know and the most handsome. And while they are already on their way to a well-deserved vacation, let's please give a large round of applause to Bob and Nancy Foster. Mayor Foster and his wife Nancy have been incredible leaders for this community and we thank them so much for their service these great last eight years in our city. Absolutely. Another round of applause for the Fosters. I also want to thank all of my other mayors and elected officials that are here tonight. I know my good friend, Mayor Garcetti, as well as all of other mayors from other surrounding cities are here with us. And I want to give them a big round of applause for being here tonight and for their support. But the most important thank you tonight goes to all of you. The largest thank you goes to the people of Long Beach for giving me this most humbling responsibility and honor. So I want to thank you tonight. Thank you, Long Beach. So today is actually the second greatest day of my life. And I want to just share with you a little bit about the first greatest day of my life. But to tell you that story, I need to backtrack a few years. I think most of you and I, most of you had a chance to share my story over the last few years and certainly during the campaign. I had the great honor of coming here to the U.S. when I was five years old with my family. And because of the incredible And because of the incredible hard work of my grandmother, Frida Caseris, may her memory rest in peace, because of her hard work, because of the belief of my mother and my father and my aunt and my uncle, who all of us were immigrants in Peru, because of their hard work, we made it to this country. For many years when we arrived, we, like other immigrants, bounced around, we lived in a few cities, we ended up in the San Gabriel Valley. And like many other people that were struggling, we often had to deal with the realities of not having many resources, not knowing the language, and English is all of our second languages. My mom would oftentimes not be around during the week, and when I would ask why, I would realize it was because she was working two or three jobs at once. My aunt, whom we all lived together, my aunt was always busy cleaning as many homes as possible so that her children, my brothers, would have food, be able to play soccer, and do all those other things that all the regular kids did, all the American kids. And when I was younger, my family, and this is really what brought me to Long Beach, when I was younger, we would, no matter where we were living at the time, we would come three or four times each summer down to Mother's Beach. And while I didn't know anything about Long Beach, and I certainly didn't go to many places outside of our little area wherever we were living at the time, consistently, time over time, we would come to Mother's Beach. And I know to this day that that experience of coming there as a kid with my family is why when I had to make a decision about college, I only applied to one school, and that was Cal State Long Beach. Go Beach! So I had mentioned that today's the second greatest day of my life. And the first greatest day of my life happened while I was at Cal State Long Beach. And I moved here to Long Beach when I was 17 and living in the dorms. In fact, the dorms were my first address. See, for many years, as soon as we were able to get here to this country, we wanted to be Americans. We wanted to be just like everybody else. We worked hard, we never asked for much, we struggled, but with faith and hard work, we always got by. But it was always the dream of my grandmother that we would one day become Americans, become U.S. citizens like everybody else. And so for me, while I was in college here in Long Beach, at Cal State Long Beach, the greatest thing happened to me, the greatest day of my life. And the greatest day of my life is the day I became an American. I will never be able to give back to my country what my country has given to me. I will never be able to give back to my country what my country has given to my family. Access to a college education, a public education, access to some type of health care, the chance to work hard and get a job. These were gifts afforded to us as new Americans. And I'm proud of the fact that today I stand here as mayor, as American as all of you in the audience today, and I'm proud of that. I believe in the American dream, and I believe in Long Beach. For me, Long Beach is the greatest city in America. We are the greatest city in America. We have the economic engine of the country in the port of Long Beach. We have the only downtown by the water between San Diego and San Francisco. We produce more artists out of Cal State Long Beach than almost any university west of the Mississippi. We have, we have an incredibly diverse population. We have one of the top five urban school districts in the country. We have a regional airport. We have incredible coastlines, diverse neighborhoods, hardworking people, a strong business sector. And what I love about our city the most is that you can find the American dream here. There is an opportunity here for everyone to succeed, no matter the color of their skin, no matter who they love, no matter where they live or where they're from, or what country they were born in. There is a place in Long Beach, an acceptance in Long Beach, that I think is a really special thing about our city. And I believe the American dream is alive in Long Beach for everyone. And as mayor, I want to lead our city into the future. I want us to embrace our destiny as a great international city with good goals and with good peoples. We will, working together, pass a responsible budget. We will work together and strengthen our educational ties with the university, with the community college, and with our school district. We will do all of those things that make cities strong, strong public safety services, good parks, open libraries, the things that we care about for our future. We will and will continue to make our city more sustainable and provide the services necessary to make this truly the world-class city we know it is. We will innovate, we'll move our city into the new century, and we'll do it together by working all of us together. And I think it's important for us to remember, we've got so much great stuff going for us. Here tonight, as we all sit here in this room, enjoying a great night with great performances, we're going to enjoy a great evening in a minute with music, with entertainment, with good food. As we enjoy this night tonight, I want us to remember that there are still almost 20% of our neighbors that are living in poverty. There are one in five of every one of our neighbors tonight is struggling between health care, between finding health care for their children, childcare, food, or a roof over their head. And I believe that no matter what you do or where you live, we all are in the business of helping people. We all want to help people. And so I challenge us, if we are ever going to become a true international, world-class city that I know we believe we will be, we have a responsibility to help these neighbors, these youngsters that are living in central Long Beach, these young people throughout the downtown or in North Long Beach that still need our support and our help. We have prospered so much, and we will continue to prosper. We will continue to support business. We will continue to work with our friends in labor. But we will always have to keep an eye as we move forward, that if we're ever going to grow as a city, we must address this issue of poverty. And I know we'll do it together. I want to thank you all tonight for believing in me. I want to thank you tonight for believing in every single person on this stage. This is a great team. This is a great group of individuals who love their city. And I want everyone here tonight, as they leave and as we enjoy the after celebration, I want you to believe that Long Beach is the greatest city in the country. I want you to believe that we can do anything if we work together and put our minds to it. I want you to believe that we can make our world-class university even better. I want you to believe that we can continue to both not just grow business in the port, but make it greener. I want us to believe that we can support our artists, that we can do the things that we dream about together. So thank you again for being here tonight. You have given me incredible responsibility that I'm excited to take on. Thank you so much for being here tonight. God bless our city, God bless our country, and go Long Beach. Thank you.
Ladies, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to present to you the newly elected and continuing leadership of the city of Long Beach, including the Long Beach City Council, city auditor, city prosecutor, city attorney, and new mayor, Robert Garcia. I invite all of this leadership to come forward, to form a line with Mayor Garcia, with your hands up in unity for the community. Lift him up.
Joyful, joyful Lord, we adore thee. God of glory, Lord of love. Hearts unfold like flowers before thee. And hoping to the sun above. All the clouds of sin and sadness drive the dark of doubt away. Give her her be more to gladness. Fill us with the light. Fill us with the light, oh, fill us with the light of day.
Joyful, joyful Lord, we adore thee. And in my life, I put none before thee. 'Cause since I was a youngster, I came to know that he was the only way to go. So I had to come to an understanding. Now I know that I'm demanded. Did you tell me who you down with? 'Cause all I know is that I'm down with G O D. Get down with G O D.
Yeah, you got me.
Get down with G O D.
Yeah, you got me.
Get down with G O D.
Yeah, you got me.
Get down with G O D.
Yeah, you got me.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our ceremony, and the city council meeting is now adjourned.